Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 12th regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors. At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence for Kathryn Lawson, our school psychologist, who recently passed away, and a first grade student at Senko who experienced a tragic accident. Thank you. At this time, we're going to rise for the pledge of allegiance, who will be led by Senko's student administrator, Ambia Ma.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the work session agenda, oh no, actually, the second item on the work session agenda is the Step Team by Dr. Matt Alloway, Acting Principal of Drexel Hill Middle School.
Members of the school board, especially, thank you very much for allowing our school the opportunity to brag a little bit tonight. I joined the Drexel Hill School just about two months ago and was asked to present to members of the committee. And I want to say, you know, to you all, probably the highlight, my hope is that the highlight of the meeting tonight for you is seeing some of the work of our students. I want to talk a little bit about Drexel Hill Middle School and what we have this year for the first time ever, which is a student step team. In the beginning of the year, two students approached their teacher and said, "We want to make a step team in our school. Can you help us to make this work?" And the teacher said, "Sure, we'll facilitate this." And so I have to recognize Colleen Felder and Lauren Love, who are over here in the audience, probably don't want to be recognized right yet. (Applause). I want to make sure any of our team members who want to be recognized arrive and take their seats together. When they advertised tryouts for the step team, they had, again, two students who approached them to say that this is a neat idea. They had 60 students show up for the first tryout. And so quickly, Colleen designed and choreographed a step, taught it to the students, and they spent the first two weeks rehearsing the tryout step. And from that, they were able to riddle down to a team of 25 eligible students after the tryouts. And the trial was pretty intense. They had to rehearse for two weeks, learn the steps, and then try out independently in front of their peers. By the end of the second sports season of this year, there were 15 eligible for our final performance, and 15 remain eligible through academics, through behavior, and through commitment to the student schedule and the rehearsals. The steps in the beginning of the year were rehearsed and choreographed by our teachers, but very soon after the formation of the team, the steps were rehearsed and choreographed by the students in the team. From what I hear, the students in the program preferred or loved the steps that had more current music, more current rhythms, and anything with a sassy attitude in the beat. So I want to share with you all a short video of the step team, so that you can see just a little bit about what I'm talking about.
We are the Drexel Hill Middle School Step Team!
Step is amazing. It really is. It helps you build confidence, courage.
It's similar to a dance form. It's a combination of movements, claps, stomps, and spoken words.
And it's not just dancing, and it's not just stomping either. It's a form of expressing yourself.
As DHMS is becoming more diverse, I think there was just more interest in it than we may have had in years before.
Two students approached me at the beginning of the school year and said, "Mrs. Love, what do we have to do about getting a step team started?"
And then it just started. They did tryouts and everything.
We were really surprised, like, when we were announcing it, like, a bunch of students came out.
We had 60 kids show up for the tryouts. Once that happened, we were like, wow, this is going to be big. We ended up choosing 30 students. Then the next thing you know, within that next week, they were coming up with step combinations and coming to show me the steps.
Originally, like, I was choreographing all of the steps, but then as the year went on, some of the kids had ideas.
They were like, okay, that sounded cool when I did it. Let me try and remember that. And then they would come to step for practice, and they would be like, "I got a new step that I want to show you guys," and then they would show them the step.
Then we start forming together routines, making it look good.
And so that was really cool, to see them grow in their ability to create and come up with different routines.
We would then have them, the students, teach the girls the step, which I also feel is a very valuable thing for them to learn how to do to teach other students.
It just takes a lot of repetition, a lot of practice.
You've got to remember to stay sharp, stay precise, and also, you've got to, like, make sure you're not going too fast or too slow. You have to listen to everybody.
Because we didn't have a ton of experience with running a step team, I reached out to the coach of the high school.
And then the captains just showed up one day. They came, they told our kids about their step team and how strict they are on their step team.
And then when they said that they wanted to see us perform, I said, "Theyesh, oof."
They were very patient with us. Like, we all split up into groups, but, like, I had Kwasi, and he just, like, he went through the steps very smoothly, and I was able to understand everything he was saying.
And after we did that, it was such a valuable experience for the girls and guys that we thought, you know, like, we need to give back. Why not now try to do that with some younger kids?
When I went to Stonehurst, I was so excited.
Fourth and fifth graders that were interested signed up, got a permission slip signed, and then we put on that same type of workshop that the high schoolers did at Stonehurst Hills.
At first, you know, I was kind of uneasy about it, because I'm not really a kid person. So I'm like, mm, kids. But then, like, when we got there and I started teaching the kids, I'm like, this is actually fun.
They caught on, because I'm good with kids, and kids like me.
It was really cool to see them kind of stepped up, talk about how to be a part of the step team, and see them, like, kind of take ownership of that.
People see step, oh, they're just stomping around, but it's something that, like, you can only do if you truly feel like you can do it. Because if your heart isn't in it, then it's going to show, and it's just going to be a bad performance.
Everybody there wants the best for the team. They get to be a part of a group of kids that are really dedicated, that care about this one thing, and they want it to be really good.
We've seen them grow in a lot of ways. They grew together as a team and understanding each other's personalities.
At first, like, we didn't know each other, but now, like, we've all formed this bond where we're really close. It's just one of those things where everybody knows each other and we're all comfortable. If you join step, it's a fun experience, and you'll definitely learn from it.
So we have Lyric Scott and Joelle Kennedy, who are here tonight with their families. Thank you, ladies, for showing up and for seeing that. There's a couple of things that stand out in that video, and I wanted to highlight that. Some of the words that are used, not by us, not by our teachers, but by our students. Words like amazing, builds confidence, builds courage, grows individuals, teaching others, patience, dedication, care, and bond. And probably the best piece of that video, something that all of our teachers know, and certainly everybody who works with schools and works with students, is that if your heart isn't in it, it's not, it's going to show. Thank you.
The third item on our work session agenda is a Black History Month presentation by Ms. Kamisha Simpson from Senko Elementary School.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, colleagues, and community members. My name is Kamisha Simpson, and I have the honor of being the principal at Walter M. Senko Elementary School. When I found out that I had the opportunity to present tonight, I immediately knew I wanted to highlight how Senko staff members have integrated students' cultures and backgrounds authentically within our school community. Out of Senko's 300 students, 83 are English language learners, and this population continues to grow. Also, 70% of Senko students speak another native language at home. Our top languages spoken by students and families are Nkali, Spanish, Punjabi, Urdu, and Vietnamese. The month of February provided the opportunity for staff members to incorporate Black History into instruction. Ambia Ma, one of our student administrators this year, wanted to share her experiences during Black History Month.
For Black History Month, Senko did a lot of things. For example, we had a door decorating contest, trivia questions, and a play. All these activities I appreciated, because to me, it seemed like our whole school came together and celebrated African-Americans and their achievements. This shows to me that we're just one big family.
I want to thank Jason Taylor for spending his time to create the video that is now going to highlight our school events throughout the month of February.
Here at Walter M. Senko Elementary School, we celebrated Black History Month throughout the month of February in various ways. At Senko Elementary School, we focus on cultural proficiency and incorporating that into instruction. Throughout the month, staff members were encouraged to complete various activities highlighting African-American cultures. Ms. Robinson integrated activities authentically within their classroom.
I partnered with our librarian, that's Kate Rojas, and what we did was incorporate a research component into a biography project in honor of Black History Month. So what happened was, she put together a list of the people that my students could choose from. I put the template together, and I also found the pictures for them to color in. After they put all of that information together, they got to present it to the class. And it opened a lot of people's minds. A lot of people didn't know who some of these people were, and they learned a lot about who these people were and the contributions that they've made.
Classrooms participated in a Black History Month door decorating contest. Hallway displays highlighted African-Americans who played a significant role in American history. The doors celebrated freedom, equality, diversity, and cultural pride. On February 8th, Dende Macedo from Musicopia provided students with an experience taking them on a journey from Africa to Brazil, tracing African drumming through Brazilian culture. Dende provided students with an interactive assembly that included students utilizing musical instruments, playing along with them, and also provided staff members with the opportunity to engage throughout the assembly. On February 22nd, students and staff members had the opportunity to dress in cultural attire that represented their families, culture, and backgrounds.
My name is Ilana Porter, and what I'm wearing is called a dashiki.
Hi, my name is Harmony De Guzman, and today is Cultural Day, so today I wore a shirt that says, "Yaman."
I'm Holly Blair. I'm a learning support teacher here at Senko Elementary. Today, I am representing Scotland, Ireland, and Lebanon, all combined into one.
At our Student of the Month Assembly, students and staff members concluded the celebrations with a performance from Mr. Labandi, "Lift Every Voice and Sing." And a play by a fourth grade classroom, "A World Without African-American Inventors." The play allowed students and staff members to see what a world would be like without African-American inventors, and the impact their inventions have today. At Walter M. Senko Elementary School, we want to continue these cultural celebrations. Although the month of February is over and we highlighted African-American history, we would like to continue cultural celebrations. In March, we have school-wide activities planned to celebrate Women's History Month, and in May, we are going to have a multicultural month, celebrating cultures that were not highlighted throughout the school year.
It means to look back into your history to help guide you forward, and retreating the past to inform the present and shape the future. As stated in the video, in May, Senko plans on having a multicultural month to celebrate cultures that were not highlighted during the school year. We hope to provide all students with the opportunity to become invested in their learning by making cultural connections to the past and present. Thank you.
Thank you for providing incredible experiences to our students in this district. If you're here and you're a staff person, I know that that is something that you're doing excellently, if that's a word, every day in our schools. Thank you. At this time, the regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on February 28th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., March 5th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the superintendent search, and this evening from 5:30 p.m. until 7:28 p.m. for matters to be discussed within limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meetings, they were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Gentile.
Here.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Dr. Rucci.
Here.
Dr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
Ms. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here, thank you. Next up is the minutes. Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The minutes of the combined work session regular meeting of February 12th, 2019 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the report of the secretary. Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. The next up is the report of the treasurer. Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Ms. Gentile.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye. Motion carries. The next up will have our report of our student representatives, Zoe and Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe, and tonight I'm going to be highlighting the kindergarteners. This month, we had the chance to speak with the principal of the middle school and actually of the kindergarten center and actually visit them. So our young friends at the kindergarten center have had a very busy week celebrating Read Across America. In efforts to promote literacy, Upper Darby High School's chapter of the National English Honor Society visited the kindergarten center on Wednesday, March 6th, to celebrate Dr. Seuss. A few high schoolers were placed in each classroom to read Dr. Seuss' books to the kindergarteners. All students, high schoolers, and kindergarteners alike were sporting crazy socks while the teachers were dressed in theme with their Cat in the Hat outfits. The day ended by holding a birthday party for Dr. Seuss, where a National English Honor Society member, dressed as the Cat in the Hat, showed up while we were singing. The kindergarteners were thrilled to sing and dance with the Cat in the Hat that day. The fun doesn't end there for these kindergarteners. That very next day, members from the Franklin Mitt Federal Credit Union also visited the kindergarten center to read to the students as well. We're excited to watch the kindergarteners become confident readers, day by day.
My highlight this month is Upper Darby High School. The past two weekends, Upper Darby High School's Theory Society put on six wonderful shows of Hairspray. Everything from the choreography, acting, and singing to the set designs was absolutely incredible. Once again, they have gone above and beyond and shown what it means to truly be a royal. This month is Social Worker Appreciation Month, and just this year at the high school, we have had a social worker add to every grade level center. We would like to thank you for your hard work, dedication, and the difference that you make each and every day. Additionally, last Friday, the high school was introduced to bump out, which was an incredible assembly that aimed to connect students and build mentorships. This was presented a few months back at a board meeting similar to this. It was an absolutely incredible sight to witness how many students were so interested and engaged. Our hopes are high for them and their future here. At the end of their presentation, they thanked the school board and administration. So I would like to thank you all as well for allowing us to have such a unique and valuable opportunity.
Thank you. There was a lot of excitement in the air at the K Center. I was glad to see you ladies there, along with all of your colleagues in the National English Honor Society. There certainly was a lot of energy in the room, and the Cat in the Hat was outstanding. So thank you for all that you did, and I know that you walked back and forth with schools and thank you for your commitment to the students. And the play, you're right, was unbelievable. We saw the set sort of half here. So anyway, thank you again so much for all of your reports and your activism in the school district. And I know I had given Zoe some postcards she had requested for advocating to our legislators for fair funding, so I appreciate you looking into implementing that as far as with the other students in the high school. So thank you. Next up is our budgeted personnel and enrollment reports. They've been made available to the board and the public, and are reported as part of the record. No vote is required. And then we'll have the report of the acting superintendent, Dr. McGarry.
Good evening, Board President Rachel Mitchell, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. I'd like to first say thank you to Ms. Kamisha Simpson, the principal of Walter M. Senko Elementary School, as well as Dr. Matt Alloway, the principal of Drexel Hill Middle School, for the wonderful work they are doing with their school communities. Thank you very much. Throughout the month of February, we have been working hard on reaching the goals of our district comprehensive plan. We have worked on initiatives such as improved communications and community engagement, increasing our efforts to diversify our staff, and improve our capacity to work with people from all different races and cultures through our work on equity, improving our elementary and middle school math, science, social studies, and English and language arts programs, presented at various public meetings on the need for fair funding of our district, continue to celebrate and recognize our talented students and staff, and finally, we are excited about our recommendation of Phase One of a multi-step, multi-year facilities plan. Each month, the district sends out an email to township officials, local press, and members of the Upper Darby School District to encourage engagement in advance of our monthly committee meetings. We post our presentations for the public to view. We fill meetings, and we make every effort to answer questions and provide insight into our recommendations each month. Over the last week, we have begun to hold town hall meetings to ask for feedback from parents and community members about our facilities plan. The information was also provided to the press, who published the meeting dates and times, so that the information was accessible to the entire community. I very much appreciate the community insight and engagement as we continue to work to improve our communication. During our meetings, we have had township council members present, parents, staff, and taxpayers, all of whom have attended some of our town hall sessions. These conversations are important, as we all work together to improve the learning conditions and opportunities for our students. As a result of the culmination of several years of work on a review of the building and capacity needs of our district schools, we have recommended Phase One of a multi-step and multi-year facilities plan to improve conditions. We have posted a frequently asked questions document on the district website, and we will continue to do so, as we receive direction from the school board on the projects being taken into consideration this evening. We look forward to solving problems together as a unified team and community. I am happy and proud to share our progress toward our equity goal from our district comprehensive plan. Dr. Counselor and his equity team have engaged Corin Press to lead very robust busts, challenging conversations, and training on deep equity and race. We're talking about what this work will mean and look like in our classrooms, for our students, and our overall community. I was able to participate in these conversations this past month, and I walked away feeling so positive about the direction we are heading to school community. We talk about expectations of one another and for our students. These courageous, necessary conversations will bring us closer together in our efforts to best serve our students and one another. Along with our plan to continue to improve community engagement and continued conversations on race and equity, we have also worked to bring forward new resource materials for math, social studies, English and language arts, and science in our elementary and middle schools. In order for us to improve our academic outcomes, we share a plan to reinvest in updating and improving the resources and learning opportunities we provide our students. We know that the very foundation of the school community is our elementary schools, and we believe the new resources will better aid our teachers and students who continue to strive for academic excellence. Ms. Christine Kelly, the director of curriculum and instruction, our district supervisors, have worked hard to investigate and recommend the most appropriate materials as we work toward our district goals. We look forward to full implementation during the 1920 school year. We will continue to align our instruction and our resources with desired academic outcomes. As the acting superintendent, I've been honored to represent this community instead as an advocate for fair funding. There has not been a week that has gone by since September 10th that either members of this board, teachers, or administrators of this district administration are not engaged in conversations about the need to properly fund our schools. We continue to accept interviews with local media outlets, participate in public hearings on panels with local legislators, and have met recently the Senator Kearney and Representatives Margaret Davidson and Mike Zabel on a tour of district facilities. As a reminder, we are underfunded by $16 million a year. On a tour of our facilities, I believe it was clear to our local political leaders that our desire to improve the conditions of our schools is a serious business. We are not attempting to chase after the latest and greatest educational fad. Instead, we simply want our students to have improved learning conditions. We're not going to give up on this fight either, because our kids in this community deserve it. As previously mentioned, the Board of School Directors has been presenting with Phase One of a multi-year, multi-step facilities plan that will ease overcrowding in several of our schools, bring the students back to their communities to attend district-owned facilities, continue to fix high-priority items listed on a capital improvement list, provide improved athletic facilities at our secondary schools, beginning with Upper Darby High School, and build a new middle school. Our ultimate goal is to have all of our students attending improved facilities within our district boundaries. This evening, I would like to offer clarity to a report and newspaper ad published by the Daily Times whereby a local businessman had made an offer on a site that he owns. I want to be clear that we are very much aware of Mr. Duffy's efforts to push the school district into purchasing a property at a price considerably higher than the appraised fair market value of $4.6 million. Ironically, in 2014, Mr. Duffy's own appraiser stated that the property was only worth $2.97 million. Year in and year out, Mr. Duffy has also attempted to gain approval to put a charter school at this location, with applications that failed to meet even the most basic educational requirements. Moreover, despite his statement in the newspaper and in his charter application that his building could hold 750 students or more, there was an order from the state indicating that the building must not have more than 499 students on site. Clearly, this is a number that falls woefully short of our current educational needs and far too little for his demanding $65 million price tag. In addition to other concerns, the county owns all the land where the current building's terraces, installed playground, and parking were located. The property would also require a bridge over the Curran Creek. Significant storms in the past washed away the bridge that was once on location, and a new bridge would require more than a photocopy prefabricated bridge as proposed by Mr. Duffy. Even with a proper plan for such a bridge, building that bridge over Darby Creek onto a property not currently owned by Mr. Duffy may take years and a considerable amount of time and money to implement it. Finally, the comments by Mr. Duffy that the current site located on a floodplain with sandbags surrounding the bottom floor would also not require a traffic study seems in direct conflict to the Finally, the comments by Mr. Duffy that the current site located on Flood Plain with sandbags surrounding the bottom floor would also not require a traffic study seems in direct conflict to the number of times I personally attempted to enter the location in preparation for the defense of several of his charter school applications. We are attempting to make serious decisions about the future of this district and needs of our facilities. We are not in the market to purchase a property that does not meet our capacity requirements and may not meet state and municipal requirements for sewer, fire code, and egress, and require us to pay millions of dollars more than what we currently are proposing. Sadly, Mr. Duffy has publicly admitted that he will continue to try to implement a charter school in this community as a way to force the district's hand. Regardless, we are not going to pay $21 million or $65 million for a property that is at best worth $4.6 million. What are we in the business here to do in this district? We're here to show you what happens when we provide our kids and staff the right opportunities with a unified approach toward excellence. In February, we held our annual student administration day. Each administrator in the Upper Darby School District had a student follow him or her in for the day. Each year, we ask the students to tell us what improvements they would make if they were in charge. Each year, we hear about the need for parking. I got the name of the phrase there. Improved facilities, increased guidance councils, and to continue to offer rich offerings of courses and electives and extracurricular opportunities. Each week, every month, district administrators meet with high school students, and together, we review recent board meetings and committee meetings, and the administration gathers their fed feedback and input. When the students heard about the potential for a new turf field and track for the high school, they commented that such an idea provides hope. Hope that the students who attend our schools will have improved facilities, more equitable experiences, and better class sizes at our middle schools. While we have several projects up for consideration tonight, it is important that we continue to remain focused on the successes of our students. This evening, I would like to begin by recognizing Julia Guach, who has been selected into the National Technical Honor Society for Cosmetology and will be inducted on the Falcroft Campus on Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00 p.m. Julia, are you here with us today?
I'm welcome.
I would like to recognize Mr. John Ribden, a recent student administrator for the day, and now a proud, listen to this, National Merit Scholarship finalist. We are far from finished, by the way. DECA is a school business club of high school students. DECA provides students with the opportunity to practice skills such as entrepreneurship, marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. I would like to recognize the following students who participated in the DECA state competition this year. By the way, behind every one of these kids is a great parent, grades home support, and unbelievable teacher. So we have started. Ms. Allison Billy, who placed second in the category of, as I call you, come on up, a professional selling at the state competition and qualified for the international competition in April, and was also awarded a scholarship from DECA. Ms. Sarah Huberton received the highest test score in the category of food marketing, was also awarded a scholarship from DECA. Sarah? Haley Keller placed fifth overall in the category of principals of hospitality and tourism. Haley? And finally, Colleen Keck placed fifth overall in the category of principals of hospitality and tourism and professional selling as well. We also continue to excel in the arts and athletics. This past weekend, I took my three sons to our performance of the Broadway musical Hairspray. If you did not get a chance to see it, you missed out on a wonderful performance. So thank you, Mr. Deeser, all the teachers here at the district, and he is the team of the high school, all the folks that were bottom, the kids were unbelievable. During the intermission, you could hear people and all of our students saying things like, "I can't believe these kids are only high school kids." Our jazz band was recently rated as outstanding and recognized for having the best trombone and rhythm sections at the Piedmont Jazz Festival. On the athletics, on the wrestling map, Cato Shaw, 113 pounds, is Central League Champion, placed fifth in districts and qualified for the state tournament in Hershey. Cato, come on down. Along with Mr. Shaw's outstanding accomplishments, four other wrestlers who qualified for sectionals were Farhan Chadri at 106 pounds, Kevin Kerwood at 145 pounds, Patrick Kerwood at 220 pounds, 100 pounds, who wins wrestling matches, and Ethan Howard at 285 pounds. Just want to say, Coach Mark, your team, you have another great year. Thanks for all you do with our kids. I want to make a great contribution. At the indoor state track competition, our Upper Darby High School Boys 4x4 Relay Team placed fifth overall with a time of 3 minutes and 24 seconds. Members of that team are Christian McCaffrey, Aaron Williams, Jivar, I think it's Jivar Flan is his nickname, George O'Keine. Please come on up. While they're walking up, I also would like to say that Mr. Flan also placed eighth in the 400-inch indoor state track competition. Congratulations. Not to be outdone, our Upper Darby High School Girls 4x200 Relay Team placed 12th overall with a time of 1 minute and 46 seconds. Members of that team are Nina Salami, Michelle Lee, Dominique Timmons, and Kiara Harrison. Joining these young ladies are some of their other great female track athletes. Sianie Barnes placed sixth in the triple jump, triple jump with a best of 37. Who placed seventh in shot with a personal best 41 feet 500. Onto the basketball court, our Upper Darby High School Girls varsity basketball team qualified for the District One Tournament. Congratulations to Jasmine Forrester, who made second team all Central. Please come on down. We also have two gentlemen who play basketball that are excellent here. They couldn't make it with us tonight. We want to recognize them. Always varsity basketball team had a great season, Mamadou Toure and Demi Keta, who both earned Central League honorable mentions. So both gentlemen could make it here. We wanted to recognize them. From the basketball court to the pool, I am proud to introduce Ms. Riley Shanahan, who set a new upper Darby High School diving record. As a final cheer of support for the outstanding accomplishments of our students, I would like to recognize our high school cheerleaders for qualifying for nationals in Florida. As an administration, we would like to thank the coaches, teachers, parents, volunteers, and Board of School Directors for continuing to provide our students with such enriching opportunities. One final acknowledgement of this evening goes to Ms. Denise Kennedy from Garaford Elementary School. As you know, she works tirelessly to support not only Garaford but the entire Upper Darby School District. Ms. Kennedy has recently been recognized as PSEA's Education Support Professional of the Year for 2018. Great job, Denise. As I close my report for this evening, it is evident to me that when our staff and students are provided with the right opportunities, with the appropriate coaching and mentoring, an environment that is unified and secure, the royal excellence of the Upper Darby School District shines. For President Mitchell, members of the Board of School Directors, this concludes my review of this evening.
I'll now have an update on the February 26th meeting of the Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on our board docs.
Thank you, Madam President. The Education and People's Services Committee meeting that took place on Tuesday, February 26th at the Beverly Hills Middle School had three agenda, two agenda items. The first agenda item was informational, and it was Student Services Pennsylvania Youth Survey, PAYS. Mr. Marshallack and Dr. Puglizi presented the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, PAYS, data that was administered in the fall of 2017. The data collected was delivered to school districts in a local summary report. This document is posted on the district website for review. The Student Services Department also discussed the ways the district supports students in social and emotional learning. Any parent or member of the public can contact the Office of Student Services with any questions. Agenda item number two required board action. A was on the school calendar. The board gave direction to the administration to review other area school district calendars and to consider options moving toward the creation of the 2020-2021 district calendar. B, the elementary report cards. The board provided guidance to the administration to review the current elementary school report cards with the district home and school committee for input. There was no motion to create an ad hoc committee for either consideration under agenda item number two. Public comment. Agenda item number one, the speakers expressed their appreciation for the presentation of the PAYS data results and how the district is already addressing some of these needs. Agenda item number two B, the speaker liked the idea of bringing the elementary report cards to the home and school for review in order to address the needs for the entire district. Agenda item number two A, the speaker shared they support the idea of starting the school year before Labor Day in order to allow time to prepare for the testing from the state. Agenda item two B, the same speaker also expressed their appreciation for the PAYS group's presentation. Agenda item number two B, the speaker asked if there were any plans to create a report card tutorial video to better explain the information on the report card in order to help parents across the district who cannot make the meetings or do not easily understand English. Agenda item number one, the speaker asked what the district's target is for participation on the PAYS for this year. Speaker asked if the suspension data is in line with our actual suspensions across the district. And lastly, the speaker for agenda item number one asked for the results from the PAYS of how many students experienced depression and suicidal thoughts and the number of students using drugs and alcohol in middle school and high school. Speaker also asked if there were any intervention programs in place in the schools to help with these issues. And that concludes the agenda summary for the Education and People's Services Committee for February 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. Next, we'll have the agenda summary from the Finance and Operations Committee. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met on February 26th in Beverly Hills Middle School. The agenda item number one was a facilities update. Your board action was required. The facilities study update, the Acting Superintendent, Dr. Dan McGarry, and members of the district administration, including Mr. Edward Marshallack, Ms. Christine Kelly, Dr. Greg Manfree, and Mr. Frank Salerno, provided the school board of directors a historical overview of the action steps taken by the Facilities Committee, a review for the new, for the need to ease enrollment trends for Beverly Hills Middle School and Drexelville Middle School, as well as recommendations from the Facilities Committee to build a new middle school and a proposed draft Phase One to address these concerns. Phase One provides for the following. A turf field and track at Upper Darby High School as soon as possible. Renovate aronomic minimum of 15 classrooms. The K-Center moves into aronomic temporarily. Walter M. Senko temporarily moves to the K-Center. Central Administration leaves aronomic and must find space. Investigate viability of 69th Street site for a new elementary school. Build a new middle school on the district-owned Clifton Heights property. The new middle school boundaries, it'll have three school feeder patterns, aronomic, Howland Park, and Hillcrest. We'll go to Drexelville Middle School, Stone Earth Bywood, and the 69th Street. We'll go to Beverly Hills Middle School, Westbrook Park, Garaford, and Prinos. We'll go to the new middle school. The estimated cost for Phase One. There's an unknown cost of rental space for Central Administration since they haven't identified a space yet. The design and document, the new middle school, would be $2.5 million. Design and document and renovate aronomic would be $1.2 million. Estimated cost for the new turf field and track, $1.8 million. Administration had requested consensus from the board, from the school board of directors, to move the Phase One option forward to a vote at the March board meeting on March 12th. The board did provide consensus. The presentation on the draft plan for two options to build a new middle school at the district-owned Clifton Heights property, board action was required. Mr. Mike Kelly, the lead project architect of KCBA Architects, presented to the school board of directors the results of a middle school feasibility study, which entails a review of potential building locations, conditions, analysis of existing middle school, building capacities, and delivery of educational programs. The building of a new middle school on the Clifton property was reviewed in detail with the school board of directors. The qualities of the location highlighted were play fields for community use, athletics and children's playground, the access to north of Springfield Road, a new school nestled within the community, and a goal to enhance an existing community asset. Construction phases were reviewed, including dedicating 4.9 acres to fields and 6.8 acres to the actual school building. Construction of play fields for the summer of 2020 through the winter of 2021, and it would open spring of 2021. Programs play on district fields during the field construction. Safety fencing separates the fields from building during construction. A two-and-a-half-year construction process with the completion in August of 2023. The keys to a successful schedule were defined as collaborative design process, frequent leadership meetings, input from end users, community engagement, presentations and forums, land development approvals. Takes one year to document. Bidding early in the year, two and a half years from bid to open. And if we start now, open 2023, 2022, 2023 school year. Two proposals were presented and included. Estimated cost for middle school with an enrollment of 750 and 950 students. The recommendation from administration was to build a new middle school for 950 students in order to provide the greatest amount of relief to overcrowding in the Drexelville and Beverly Hills Middle Schools. Proposed costs for each draft of the new middle school were and $64,712,754 respectively. The design and documentation costs for the new middle school are $2.5 million. Administration had requested consensus from the school board of directors to approve the project to proceed to design documentation, review, and approve each phase. to approve the project to proceed to design documentation, review and approve each phase, hold community, design presentations in the spring and fall, required at 34 late in the fall, and bid early 2020, award in the spring of 2020, and financial commitment. The presentation on the draft plan and options for renovation of Aronimic Elementary School in preparation for meeting future enrollment needs. This presentation provided a recommendation to bring Walter M. Senkow Elementary School back into the district. Two proposals were presented and included estimated cost for renovation of the Aronimic Elementary School. Renovation of existing school, the DA offices are removed. Three small classrooms at the front of the school are converted to a library and computer classroom. The existing library and school administration area are converted into classrooms. The second floor district administrative offices are converted into classrooms. In total, five additional classrooms are added to the school along with a new library and computer room and a new school administration area. Capacity equals $450. Uh, capacity, $450. Cost of the project is estimated at $13,946,868. The second proposal included the renovations with the addition of classroom. Renovation of the existing school, the district administrative offices are removed. A three-story classroom addition is added to the end of the school. 10 additional classrooms and one large music room are included in the addition. In total, 16 classrooms are added to the school in comparison to the existing school. Four classrooms are provided per grade with three additional flex classrooms available. Four classrooms dedicated to special ed are also provided. In this scenario, the capacity is 675. The cost of the project is estimated at $21,183,768. The design and documentation costs for Aronimic renovations are $1.2 million. The school board of directors did provide consensus to move forward. And third, the presentation on cabinet improvement projects as discussed during the January Finance and Operations Committee meeting, board action was required. Administration had requested for the school board of directors consensus to engage architects and engineers for the following projects. Window replacement at Beverly Hills Middle School. Roof replacement at Highland Park Elementary School. Estimated costs for the projects are $1.6 million and $1.1 million in addition to architect fees. These projects are high priority projects from the district cabinet improvement plan. Projects will require financing through bond issuance. The school board of directors did provide consensus to move forward. And the rest of the report is public comment. I will not take up your valuable time in reading all them, but they are all available on board docs. Thank you. That concludes my summary of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next up is the Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Madam President. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Chantil.
Aye.
Comments on the Instruction and Curriculum Report vote. Okay, roll call please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Chantil.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. The next up is the Personnel Report, Dr. Taylor.
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from board members?
Yes.
Taylor.
I would like to take this opportunity to wish our 12 retirees a happy and restful retirement and thank you very much for your years of service. I would also like to congratulate our newly appointed principal of Primus Elementary School, Mr. Bill Rogers.
Did I hear a second? Are there any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public on the Personnel Report? Seeing none, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Chantil.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. The next up is the Policy Report, which is in its first reading. Mr. Des Noiers.
There are three policies that are up for a first reading. So changes have been proposed and the policies, each policy with the proposed change can be found in the policy report for this meeting on board docs. And I thought I'd just go through the, I'd go through quickly the major changes. So the first policy is Policy 108, Adoption of Textbooks. And two changes are that we now specify that, the policy now specifies that books can be in digital format. And then the second change is that it states that the superintendent will consult with administrators and professional staff on textbook choices. The second policy is Policy 806, Child Abuse. There are a number of changes to this policy. Four of the larger changes are as follows. A change is included to indicate that someone who engages in human trafficking also violates the child abuse policy. Another change is that aiding and abetting child abuse becomes a prohibited activity. A third change is that it's now required that school districts post posters with child abuse hotlines. Posters have to be placed prominently in each school. And then the fourth change is that instead of just referencing the principal, who is a jar that says principal or building administrator. And the third policy is Policy 827, Conflict of Interest. And changes here include the fact that if a board member abstains from a vote, they will submit a written documentation with a reason to be included in meeting minutes. And there's also a change that the superintendent or a designate will report conflicts of interest in the case of federal grants or awards.
So there's no vote required on these policies?
These policy changes will be up for a second and final reading at the March 26th committee meeting. They'll be up for a discussion at the March 26th meeting and then a vote at the April meeting? Okay, a meeting, they'll be up for a discussion at the March 26th committee meeting and for a vote at the April board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers. The next up is the Food Service Report, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Madam President. The Food Services Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from board members? Comments from the public on the Food Service Report? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Chantil.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next report is the Supplies Report, Mrs. Chantil.
The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Comments from the public on the Supplies Report? Seeing none, poll vote please, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Chantil.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. The next up is the Facilities Report, but before I call on Mrs. Jordan. Tonight, the board will consider the following motions in our Facilities Report. We're going to consider the approval of the appointment of KCBA architects to provide professional services for the design and documentation of a new middle school for approximately 950 students, totaling approximately 166,500 square feet at North Springfield Road in Clifton Heights. At this time, the board would be considering authorizing this first phase of schematic design, which will include an architectural analysis, planning, site, civil engineering, traffic study, environmental study, and a typographic land survey at a total expense not to exceed $2.5 million. The first phase will include the architectural analysis and planning, site and civil engineering, traffic study, environmental study, and the typographic land survey at a total expense not to exceed $600,000 in the event that there is any event that makes our findings that would preclude us from moving forward. If the studies prove that the Clifton Heights site is a viable site for the needed third middle school, the board would expect that stakeholder groups would be further engaged to participate in the next stages of the planning. These stakeholder groups would include the elected officials in Clifton Heights Borough, the police chief of Clifton Heights, Chief Rockenbach, the neighbors of the Clifton Field, and the stakeholder groups. The goal of this phase is to see if the school district-owned property is viable. At this point, we only know that the required size of the school and the needed athletic fields will fit on that property. In order to explore this site, we need more information from the site/civil engineer study, the traffic study, the typographical land survey. Once we obtain that information, it will be made public. Over the course of this process, the school district administrators have requested meetings with the Clifton Heights Borough elected officials and have done considerable community outreach in a short period of time. The next item for consideration is the appointment of the KCBA architects also to do the same type of work at the Aronimic School. Again, at this time, we don't know if the site is viable for the renovations that are proposed. That is the goal of these motions. There are other capital improvements items for consideration in the Facilities Report tonight. There are architect appointment for the natatorium roof, which is our swim complex here at the high school. Intercom system replacements for Hillcrest Elementary School, Primus Elementary School, Westbrook Park Elementary School, clock replacement systems at Hillcrest and Primus, and a core vortex turf field and mondo track here at Upper Darby High School. Now, I would like to call on Mrs. Jordan for the Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be presenting this evening the very much anticipated Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report. Madam President, you did a good job of summarizing what is in the report. I did also want to mention to the public that this report was updated around four o'clock today and really it was just additional details. And Madam President went through what the details are. So at this time, I'd like to move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board?
Thank you, Madam President. As a school board member, who knows that there's a big vision that the district needs? I just want to make a few comments about tonight's moving forward with Phase One. Changing the landscape of our school district and the logistical details of our neighborhoods has created many emotions in our community members over the last several weeks. And after careful consideration, I just would like to extend the fact that the board, the community members that are here in the room and that came out on the February 26th meeting are to be acknowledged, and we thank you for your engagement. It's clearly important that we alleviate some of the persistent issues of such overcrowded classrooms, inadequate facilities, and the pressing inequities that continue to plague our students who deserve better. As we move towards finding the right solution, although it may be frustrating, I would urge us to consider that the pace of this process, although it may seem like it's going really quickly, that we need to consider the viability. The importance of staying laser focused on increased grassroots community engagement. And I know that the administration, and I was a part of it, I went to Beverly Hills last night, and there were a few parents there. And as the acting superintendent said, we are trying to engage the community, but I would really encourage us all to focus on that engagement before moving forward with Phase Two. And that looks like making sure that the families, taxpayers, and stakeholders are included and informed in every aspect of the subsequent and forecasting of the plan. Change always creates impact, sometimes uneasiness, and often increased pushback. But tonight, the real question is, do we have viability to change the changes that we need for our children in the district? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes. Just have a brief statement. I do like the Facilities Plan and I feel that ultimately it will help solve a few of the pressing issues in our district concerning overcrowding. However, I do feel like the process as a whole may feel a little rushed and the town halls that took place over the last two weeks could have been conducted before the board agreed to move forward to a vote on February 26th. Some of the public feels that the process is already in motion and there is no reason to attend the town hall, even though that is definitely not the case. I believe that more people would have attended the town halls if they had taken place before the February 26 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. However, I'm glad that the town halls were scheduled and did take place. I think that the board needs to and will stay mindful of how plans and initiatives that affect the entire district are developed, communicated, and implemented. The best way to ensure widespread acceptance and buy-in is to indulge and engage the public at the earliest possible opportunity so that all stakeholders feel as though they are a part of the process. Again, I do support the plan and I'm happy to see it move forward.
Are there any other comments from board members? I did want to say, in September, when Dr. McGary became the acting superintendent, I, along with a few other board members, attended every school in the district to meet and greet parents throughout the district where Dr. McGary did share the plan or the beginning phases of these plans. And I just, I do want to appreciate that we have been having this conversation for quite some time. I also want to thank the team that put together the presentation that we had here in the Performing Arts Center earlier in February, prior to the February 26th committee meeting, to give the community a preview. I think we are making strides to do this, but the pressing issue really is here is that we have, we're in a bubble and we're about to explode. And if we don't do something, I wish we could do it tomorrow, but that is just not the way this process works. From start to finish, it's approximately a three-year process in order to be able to build these additional spaces for our students. So we don't have any more time to waste, and that is why I am supporting that we at least tonight go forward with seeing if the site, the two sites are even viable to do, to carry out these plans. So I believe we had a motion and a second. And are there any comments from the public?
Suzanne Britis, 319 Austin Drive, Clifton Heights. The board needs to vote no on moving forward today. There are too many questions that need to be answered internally before spending $3.7 million on outside studies. In addition to the exclusion of the Clifton Heights community from the planning process prior to the district's announcement of these plans, I find it extremely troubling that there has been a lack of discussion relating to the financial impact of this endeavor. For as often as we are reminded about our district's financial struggles from underfunding, we seem to be going out of our way to avoid talking about them in relation to this situation. We have not heard from our business manager regarding any of these plans. We have not seen a preliminary budget for the 2019-2020 school year. We know our taxes could be increased up to $3.74 million. We know our taxes could be increased up to 3.3% this upcoming year, but we don't know yet how close we will get to it, how much of our fund balance we will need to use, or if a shortfall will still exist after the tax increase in use of fund balance money. We need to know potentially how much the rough operating costs and bond payments will be, will add to our annual budget. It is not unreasonable to expect rough calculations based on what we pay now to be put together and shared with the board and public prior to moving forward to the next step. In a June 2018 Philadelphia Inquirer article, our former superintendent Dan Norelli was quoted as saying that without additional funding, our district is on the road to being bankrupt in two years. We need to know how much this five-year, how much of this five-year plan is truly financially feasible for our district because we don't know if and when more funding is coming. We can't afford to spend money on outside studies for work that isn't feasible to be completed or sustained in the next five years when we have so many other possible uses for those funds. I don't want to see massive cuts to our educational program, programming, or significant modifications to how content is delivered to our students occurring shortly after this because tunnel vision took over during the planning process. More internal research at the district level needs to go into these plans before spending $3.7 million on outside studies we can never get back. Let's take the time to do all of our homework before taking this a step further. Let's take the time to repair the damaged relationships caused by this process between the school district and community and engage people in a way that is transparent, sincere, and doesn't come off as an afterthought. I'm asking the board to press the pause button and vote no tonight. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Colvin, 1025 Edmonds Avenue. There are a lot of things going on, and I just want to start from the top. We don't have a permanent superintendent, we have an interim superintendent, and the school board is conducting interviews, as you had shared earlier. Our chief financial officer recently gave his notice, and the facilities managers, one of the 91 positions listed, is open in our school district. As you know, we are chronically overfunded and require homeowners to pay more every year just to sustain what we have. Despite all this, the board is going to approve the first steps of an ambitious construction plan to build two new schools and renovate and add to existing schools and to take out a huge bond to accomplish all this. This is with no input from a permanent superintendent, with a business manager who won't be here to see the project through, with no facilities manager, and with angry neighbors, and with unknown results of the county-wide reassessment. This is all too much, too fast. I know there are facilities issues that need to be resolved, but this is the wrong way to do it. Neighboring districts who have had large capital programs have gone through the same issue, but have engaged in extensive, often years-long, community presentations and listening tours to get community buy-in. Are you ever willing to please everyone, no? I know that will never happen, but those neighboring communities were able to come to a consensus, which is some of this project lacks. And I have some questions. Besides the cost of construction, what will be the additional cost for staffing and transportation needs? Given the teacher shortage, how does the district plan to staff this new middle school? Has any consideration been made regarding the county's reassessment process and how the results of that will impact homeowners in Upper Darby, specifically their tax bill? Has any consideration been made to act one index and whether you will exceed that cap as a result of these new reoccurring costs? Now, just as background, I served on the facilities committee since 2015-16. Originally, we were tasked with looking at the facilities and prioritizing the needs, and we were asked to look at the elementary school level, given the dynamics of the school classroom, the size of the school classroom that the board had given us. Was it within the last year and a half, these conversations changed? The committee was told that the real need was at the middle school level, and the elementary issue could in fact be remedied by looking at moving the catchment areas. From my perspective, the middle school issue moved very fast. The data was shared with the committee, and then quite quickly, the board was asked to consider an RFP to look at Clifton Field, which was news to me, and here we are today. We are looking at building a new elementary school, a new middle school, which, given the genesis of this all, confuses me greatly. When I look at the problem and try to create a strategy, I build a coalition and vet all options. I not only apply this to my own life challenges, but it's what I do for a living. None of these elements were applied to this problem, and you can only look at the outcry from the Clifton community as evidence of this. Newly constructed facilities are nice, but we will do little to help a community that's crumbling from plate, because we can't afford to live here anymore. I understand we have a facilities issue, but given the moving agenda that I have experienced, as well as all the outstanding questions that still need to be answered, I don't think moving forward at this time is the best course of action. Again, we're moving too fast. Thank you.
I'm Christina Matzinger. I spoke at the last meeting. I reside at 323 North Oak Avenue in Clifton Heights. My front door would be the one facing the field where the plans are to build a new middle school. I just wanted to state that I understand that things need to be done in the school district. Grouping in, building a new middle school in the community in a Phase One, I feel like that should be excluded from Phase One. I feel like that should be a separate entity all by itself. Dr. McGary, I know that you had stated in the beginning of your statement that, you know, it was noted many times in the community and at school events that there was talk about, you know, building a new school and a new phase, but I know that there are a lot of people in my community that don't know that this is going on right now. I have four daughters, one of which graduated from the school district, three of which are still in it, one in the high school, two in the middle school. I too am a graduate of Upper Darby, class of '94. I was not able to make it to back-to-school night, I had to work, so I missed the first discussion that you mentioned in September about this, and it wasn't made aware in any paperwork or newsletter or anything sent home. I get nine emails daily from the school, from my children's teachers, and Wednesday folders, and just updates and things like that. I don't remember receiving anything along the lines of this discussion or Phase One in the beginning of the school year, only in the last few weeks. Behind you, there are signs that say "Opportunity, Unity, and Excellence", which is a motto of Upper Darby School District. I hope you take tonight as the opportunity to vote no against Phase One and provides unity in our community to have more of a discussion about what will take place in our town, and hopefully that we can come to an excellent decision that will work for our community, our residents, and our children. I know that they do need more room to learn. You guys are talking about extending elementary schools and building a new middle school, but all of those places, even the ones that exist, all come here in one high school. And it was crowded when I was here, it's crowded now, and I don't know. I just feel like there needs to be more time for everyone to just talk about it and be more open with one another. Thank you.
I'm Patricia Simpson, I live 1226 Wing Cliff Avenue. You had mentioned that you had a very good outreach program to let people know about this. My husband and I just found out today, and the location you're speaking of is my backyard. So, I really think you do need to extend this information before anyone makes any more decisions because truthfully, a neighbor here told us today, "It's ridiculous that we live there on that street, and we don't even know what's going on in our backyard." We have a right to know what's going on. And I'm not saying that you don't need the schools, but let us have a decision in this. Don't put it on us without us knowing. It's not fair. We have senior citizens here that are living on a budget now. How are they going to pay these extra taxes? And that's the truth. Nobody cares about the people that live in this community. If they did, you would ask us, send some literature to our homes, do something. Just don't drill it at us like this. It's ridiculous. I'm sorry, but I'm really upset about this because we really didn't know until today. It's ridiculous.
Christine Boji, 312 Westbrook Drive. I'm going to have an unpopular opinion. I think at least to see if that spot is viable is a good idea because we're spending money to rent properties outside of the district, and we're moving kids outside of the district, and we have district-owned property. It blows my mind as a taxpayer that I'm paying taxes for rental space for kids in my community to go outside of my district. That upsets me as a parent, it upsets me as a taxpayer. I get the whole community thing with the field and Clifton Heights. I am a South Philly Italian. Nobody is more passionate than we are about community. I get it, I really get it. And I just hope that, and I understand that the field is very important to everyone, and I get that there's a lot of history there. I just think if everybody outreaches and works together, I think that something reasonable can come out of this. I don't think that it has to be no absolute, yes absolute. There's got to be a way to meet in the middle somewhere. And it looks like, to me, the benefit of having a new school on that property gives you state-of-the-art grounds. You know, you're going to get a new field, you're going to get multiple purpose fields, new baseball diamonds. I mean, as long as the kids... Excuse me. All right, listen, listen. I would appreciate the respect and the...
Ms. Boji, just announce, just address us. Any members of the community, please let her have her time.
My opinion, okay? I appreciate where you guys are coming from, but I just... It's so ignorant, it's so obnoxious. But I just think that, you know, you're going to get all this new state-of-the-art things that can benefit the kids in the community, not just the kids that go to the schools, but the kids that, you know, maybe go to the Catholic schools or go to other schools. You know, you have, that can mean, you can still do your carnivals, you can still do your sports. I think it's just going to be a nicer, you know, you get new, nice things with something that's state-of-the-art. So, you know, for what it's worth, but I agree with the board, so good luck.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Kaplan, I'm living at 241 Highland Avenue in Upper Darby, and I support the Upper Darby School District Directors to move forward with this feasibility study. When I spoke with my sixth grader at BH about the feasibility study, his reply was that he would like AC and heat. That's a crazy conversation to have with a sixth grader. When I come here before the board, I'd rather be talking about more AP classes. I'd rather be talking about science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. I'd rather be talking about more student services. I'd like to hear more about the equity initiative that the district is doing. But here, when I talk to my son and my daughters at the high school, we talk about the condition of the high school and Beverly Hills Middle School, and it just saddens me. And this has been going on for a long time, decades, for decades. There has not only been a lack of investment, but disinvestment in our schools, and that has a whole political history, and it has a whole racial history, and it has a whole social history. And for someone who believes in community engagement, and I really support community engagement, but this isn't moving too fast. In my mind, it's about time. So, you've been elected to make some really hard decisions, and I have faith that we elected people to make those decisions to the best of the community interest. And so, those courageous conversations need to happen as to how to move forward. So, I do support you voting to go on with this feasibility study, and I think that it's about time that we did make these major investments into our schools. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Long Knoll, I'm from Stonerst 6942 Guilford Road. I have a question. How many people here are from Stonerst area?
Ms...
I only see one hand.
Ms., if you could please just address the board.
Okay, I just wanted to know that because I realized I wasn't going to speak. Then I realized that the one person was from my area, and Stonerst sort of got thrown into it. I have lived in Stonerst area for about a quarter of 35 years, my kids went to Stonerst Hills. I'm not happy about the fact that you're thinking about putting an elementary school in 69th Street playground because truthfully, that's the only green space we have, and that's giving it credit because it's not well count. I think it would be dangerous. I think the traffic would be horrendous. I have at this point counted, coming down Guilford Road, 25 school buses. I think if we put an elementary school there, that that is going to increase. I can see traffic accidents, I can see injuries. One thing I think we really need to think about before we think about building a new elementary school is doing a audit and see just how many students really come from Upper Darby and are not coming from somewhere else and being dropped off. And yes, we do see it, we've reported it. Secondly, again, as has been brought up from many people, my taxes. I own my house. Luckily, I still pay a mortgage on it, but it's going to raise my taxes. I just am not happy about the fact that it sort of got slipped into the mix. And I realize that I was standing there waiting, that there are a number of projects going on. The project getting started over there on State Road Township Line. There are a number of schools that have been renovated and/or vacated. One of them is St. Alice. Why wasn't that considered before they sold it? We have in another, not far from us, Brandon, it's in Lansdale, St. Cyril's. I don't understand why we can't find another location rather than build and take up space that is already very, very underutilized for what it's used for, which is green space. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Campbell. I live at 7184 Upper Darby, VA. My personal opinion with the new schools is that I think it is a good idea because speaking from personal experience, I have had issues with overcrowding in my school, which helps certain children and kids back from getting opportunities. Like when, say, an AP class was too full, you couldn't accept more students into the class if the classroom was too full for safety reasons and, you know, other reasons like that. So, I personally want to thank the board for voting us on this because I think it will solve a lot of issues that we have, like overcrowding in certain classrooms, and I see no problem with it, so thank you.
My name is Tom Bunting. I reside at 5164 Russell Drive, Darby. And I've heard everyone's opinion, and I just wanted to say that I don't think this vote should be so by one entity. Why isn't it put on the November election as a referendum so that everyone would have a say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kiera Rafferty, 8309 Windermere. So, I want to say that I am tentatively in favor of the feasibility study. I would like to see what it says. I have a child at Drexel Hill Middle School. He has multiple classes with 32, 33-plus students in the class. He's got multiple classes that are in trailers, which, I know they're supposed to be temporary, they're not going anywhere unless something is done to ease the overcrowding. I've been talking to a lot of people about this, and I just want to share with you some of the misinformation that is out there or maybe just lack of information. One thing that I feel like you've been really trying to do is to highlight the lack of funding from the state, and yet I still continuously have conversations with people who don't realize that we don't have a fair funding formula. And I understand that confusion because I moved to the state seven years ago, and it took me about two years of people telling me that we don't have a fair funding formula for it to really sink in because it's so illogical that, you know, a district can lose 1,000 students and another district can gain 1,000 students and not see a change in the amount of funding. So, I know you've been really trying to get that information out there. Unfortunately, it's still not out there as much as it could be. But recently, I looked at the report about the most overfunded districts, and, you know, my taxpayer dollars are going to Western Pennsylvania to build state-of-the-art... my taxpayer dollars are going to Western Pennsylvania to build state-of-the-art sports stadiums for schools in Western Pennsylvania. I want them here. So, you know, that's just some information that needs to be out there. The other thing is, I feel like there's a concern about the population that's moving west from Philadelphia. And so I just want to say, for me, the diversity of this district is not something to fear or to resist, but it is such a valuable treasure. You know, my kids have friends from Pakistan, from Jamaica, from Liberia, from Serbia, from Cameroon, from Bangladesh. And it just, it helps them, you know, socially, it helps them academically. My son just qualified for the state geography bee, one of only seven fifth graders in the entire state. And I do really credit the fact that he, you know, the world is at his doorstep, and that has helped him so much academically. And then if we think about our kids' future, you know, the world is globalizing, and we need a diverse community to prepare to live in a global future. The last thing that, again, sort of misinformation that I hear, you know, we do have students who come here from Philly and try to slip under the radar, but there's, if you can just put out a little more information about that it's not the thousands and thousands that some people think it is, it's, you know, a small number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Campion, 224 South Church Street. Two quick things. One, has the board, or I don't see anything in the frequently asked questions about the Commonwealth Reimbursement Program, Plan Con, is there any that you have to do certain things to actually be a part of it? So I guess the criteria is tough or something? I don't know, because I don't see any mention of it in any of your plans or anything? And that'd be one thing. And the second one, you know, the president talked about some of the dates and everything, how we're structured. But if the test does give voted a yes, the guy said it'd be two months for the test to come back, so wouldn't it be till what? You wouldn't be able to present the facts to us till June 4th meeting? So I guess the, well, it would be at the July 9th meeting? If we wanted to go farther with that? I guess that would probably be the earliest you could do with the second plan, correct? I'm just kind of frequently asked questions that aren't on there. All right?
My name's Bob Nguyen. I live at 513 Midvale Road in Upper Darby. And I commend you on your efforts to try to get this thing started and get it going. I think you should proceed to get your preliminary information. And goodbye.
Hello. My name is Dawn Centrino, I reside at 250 West Washington Avenue, Clifton Heights, Pennsylvania. I didn't know if you guys had mentioned before about the grading system. K through eighth grade for one of your schools. I remember that from the prior meeting. I was just wondering, I know you're upset, everyone's upset about the overcrowdness of the middle schools. And when I was at Beverly Hills last week, I couldn't believe my eyes, I attended that school, sitting in the seats that they really... Every school needs to be renovated, I understand that. And education is very important, all parents, that's a given, we all know that. But to take our field away, our community, we, it's Clifton spirit, and if there was any possible way that you could change the grading system. Let's put it this way, if they're gonna do like an elementary school, expand it, expand up, make a third floor, maybe, you know, you could have, it could go from K through sixth grade, then all the sixth graders would still be in elementary school, to whereas it would not overcrowd Draxel Hill and Beverly Hills Middle School. As I was a graduate of a junior high school, we had it that way. Now, mind you, as an eight, as an eleven-year-old, you're in sixth grade at age eleven. So, my opinion, that's a young age being around, you know, kids that are kind of, you know, two and three years old, then the eleven-year-old go to a middle school. They could actually stay in kindergarten, K through sixth grade elementary, keep the sixth graders there till, you know, they graduate to sixth grade elementary school, then go to a junior high, change the grading system back the way it used to be. Maybe that will eliminate the overcrowdness. Now, the other thing is that with the taxes coming up, you have to remember, there are a lot of elderly people that are on a fixed income. My parents were included. And there were a few elderly people that did lose their homes. One had a stroke because she could not afford the school taxes. So I would like you guys to keep that in mind. And another thing is that, you know, the taxes do go up, I understand. But like, say you have to rent a house, or a duplex, or an apartment, the landlords are going to raise the rent, and that's gonna be just as hard, you know, for a person to, you know, pay rent on an apartment. But my main thing is, if you could maybe think about changing the grading system so Draxel Hill and Beverly Hills won't be so crowded, you could do K through sixth grade, and then build and expand the elementary schools. I mean, I know education's important, but elementary school, I do have to say, is a very crucial time in a child's life of learning. Because from the time you're five to the time you are eleven, you learn a lot. Children's brains are like a sponge, and we all know education's important. But maybe you could think about the grading system. You know, it would help, you know, to eliminate that overcrowdness. I grew up, seventh, eighth, ninth graders, junior highs, the best years of my life. And Beverly Hills is a beautiful school, and it really needs to be renovated, and same as Draxel Hill. My daughter went to Draxel Hill. I graduated from this great, wonderful school year, Upper Darby, okay, in nineteen eighty-four, I loved it, thank you. And Beverly Hills has a junior high. So if you would keep that in mind and vote no to that, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Ramos, and I live at seventeen Fairview Road. The field is my backyard. Right now, there is no parking on Fairview Road due to, there's a curtain place, there is a auto shop across the street, there is an appliance remodeling chairs and stuff, upholstery place. So there is no parking now as there is. So when a school comes, there's definitely not gonna be any parkings for these homeowners' taxpayers. Also, there's a carnival that is on that lot every year. Us homeowners that have our backyards to that are petrified that whole week because there are children that attended. Now, all of your schools, they are all smoke and drug free, am I correct? When they can't do it on your property, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to our property, which we pay taxes for, and they're gonna smoke, and they're gonna do drugs, and they're gonna drink on our property. I ask that you do not go forward with this plan. Or you speak to everybody, like they were all saying. None of us were aware, us people that live there were not aware, if you do not have children in the schools. I don't think that's fair. There's older people that live there that have their houses. They don't pay a mortgage, they pay these taxes. They're gonna lose their houses. And they don't even know about this. This is not even known to them. If I didn't have neighbors that had kids in school, I would know about it. There's no letters going out to the residents and stuff to tell them. I don't think this is a fair, this is fair. And I understand that kids need education. My kids went all through Upper Darby High School. They all graduated here, and I get it. But like they were saying, you know, kindergarten to sixth grade, seventh, eighth, and ninth middle school, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth high school, I get that. Why can't they be building up on these middle schools? Instead of building on these fields? I don't understand. I just wish you would can take the taxpayers and the homeowners into consideration. Thanks.
Michael Humphries, 35 Arch Street, Clifton Heights, Pennsylvania. I told you the last time, I could throw a hardball from the front, my front lawn to that field. I'm gonna be sure this week, ninety-nine percent of the residents, the residents of Clifton Heights does not want this school built on their field. All right? National Humphries. Thank you.
Some of the questions that were posed tonight, we will add to the frequently asked questions, things about Plan Con, how many floors a public school building is allowed to be, those type of things. I did take some of them, so I'm sure Dr. McGary did as well. There's a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
For this facilities report, I would like to delay the vote on the architectural appointment of the new middle school and the architectural appointment of Ron McElementary School. And I vote in favor for the rest of the items on the facility report. Do you need me to read them? What I'm voting in favor for?
No.
The bounds is fine.
Here, here. Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries.
The next up is the transportation report, Dr. Rucci.
Thank you, Madam President. The transportation report is in the hands of each board member, it has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public on the transportation report? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor? Mr. Fields? Ms. Curry? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. Mr. Brown, the finance and budget report, please.
The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member, it has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Seeing none, roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noirs?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor? Mr. Fields? Ms. Curry? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. The next up, I have collateral assignments. Mrs. Jordan, Delaware County Community College?
Nothing to report.
Dr. Taylor, the Delaware County Intermediate Inn Award?
Yes. A few announcements. The sixth annual Delaware County Science, um, sixtieth annual, sorry, Delaware County Science Fair will finish up this week with the award ceremony. This will be on Thursday, March fourteenth, from seven to nine p.m. at the DCIU Morton Campus located at 200 Yell Avenue. Also, on March twenty-sixth, from one to six p.m., there will be a special STEM Playground Workshop. Troxel, a national leader in education technology and collaboration solutions, for more than sixty years, will be hosting a STEM Playground at the DCIU. This event will feature innovative STEM and Makerspace products. Vendors will display virtual reality, augmented reality, robots, 3D printers, coding tools, and much more. Attendees will be able to experience and test all of these products and new technologies firsthand. This will be great for K to twelve teachers, curriculum directors, and administrators. And so that is on March twenty-sixth from one to six p.m. And I would also like to take this opportunity to highlight one of the adult programs at the DCIU, our LPN program, which is a one-year program designed to prepare adult students for a career as a licensed practical nurse. The accredited program admits approximately a hundred students annually and conducts courses at both the Markle Classroom and various health facilities all around Delaware County. If interested in applying, please visit DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. The next up is the Legislative Council Report. Mr. Fields?
Thank you, Madam President. The Delaware County Legislative Council meets tomorrow, March thirteenth. The agenda, again, primarily discusses SB thirty-four, which I mentioned at the last voting meeting. The House version of this bill is HB five-two-six. Didn't have a number at the last meeting, but it does now. Just to review, SB thirty-four and House Bill five-two-six would relieve school districts from paying cyber tuition to cyber-tarder schools if they offer a similar program in house. Upper Darby offers a similar program in house. For Upper Darby, that would mean a savings of four point two million dollars. That's recurring dollars. The House bill, it has bipartisan support, and I am hopeful that it'll come to a vote. The Senate bill is still in search of a Republican sponsor so that, so that it too has bipartisan support. When you walked in tonight, most of you left, when you walked in tonight, you might have picked up these two pages, okay? All right? The one is the summary of SB thirty-four, okay? The other one is contact info for Senator Tom Killian, okay? He is in Delaware County as well as Chester County, and I was hoping that some of you would have family or friends that live in the listed townships, right, in his district, okay? I'm asking that you ask your family and friends that live in those areas to politely speak, politely speak with Senator Killian, and ask him politely to support SB thirty-four, okay? On the back is some of the savings that the school districts in his district would have, okay? And that is everything.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Mrs. Gentile, the Amanda Hall-Christens Scholarship Committee. Not yet, looking forward to it. Home and School, Mrs. Jordan?
I don't have anything to report on the Home and School, but I did want to talk about something else so I can... On your business.
All right, Technology, Mr. Brown and Dr. Rucci?
Just briefly, Dr. Rucci and I reviewed our website. We just have some minor enhancements and recommendations that we'd like to make to Mr. Holinsky, so look for that soon. All right, thank you.
The PSBA representatives, I know Mr. Des Noirs and myself attended the recent sectional meeting. Mr. Des Noirs, did you want to report on it, or shall I?
I can.
Okay.
So, as President Mitchell said, she and I attended a Pennsylvania School Boards Association Regional Meeting last week. There were two presentations. One was about alternatives, to alternatives to providing safe schools, and another was about the new, Metzbank's new Safe to Say anonymous reporting system, which has been very well utilized since its introduction in January.
One of the things that I found to be very interesting with the Safe to Say program, and I know we're rolling out our educational programs to our students very soon, was that students or reporters that use the Safe to Say app, and the tips are not credible or they're false tips, they would be subject to prosecution. So I just think that is a caution that I think, I hope is part of our training for our students, that if they misuse the Safe to Say program, that there could be consequences. I didn't realize that with the program. I also thought it was interesting that former Representative Verb is running the program, and he is collecting the data on all of the, the student reportings of bullying and unsafe situations. And he is hoping that that is gonna help move the legislature to fund proper programs in mental health services for our students. It's sort of a change, and, you know, his tune, I know he was on the Fair Funding Commission when he was a representative, but I think a lot of times he's like, oh, well, you can just work this out another way. So I did think it was interesting that he is involved in the program, and they're tracking, and they're seeing a big need, a big hole in our school districts. The next up, I don't think we have anything for the Policy Committee. Communication, Dr. Taylor or Ms. Jordan? No. Okay. Does anybody else have any other collateral assignment?
Okay. Under Old Business, I wanted to give an update on the superintendent search. Just give me a second, because my computer just froze. The board is in the process right now of wrapping up the superintendent search. We've conducted interviews and we plan to make an announcement within the next few weeks for the next permanent superintendent of the Upper Darby School District. We can get that on the website, Dr. McGary. Thank you. Anyone else under Old Business? Any new business from board members?
Madam President, I just wanted to thank the Radnor School Board for signing the resolution to support the fair funding for the school districts in the area, because we need as much support as that we can get.
And that's as a direct result of the Legislative Council and PA School Works. We're very happy that more affluent school districts are joining the case to, for more fair funding, so it is great. Any other new business from board members?
Yes, Madam President, I have a motion to set forth a resolution supporting Senate Bill 34.
Great. Would you please read the resolution for the boards to consider?
Yes. The resolution supporting Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 for school districts providing their own cyber learning programs by the Board of Directors of the Upper Darby School District, whereas a growing number of school districts across the state are responding to the need to successfully operate high-quality, full-time cyber education programs within their traditional district programs that provide flexibility and personalized options as a choice for students and families. And whereas school district cyber programs include rigorous curriculum aligned with the state academic standards and taught by appropriately certified teachers, and school districts can provide their cyber education students with regular and special education instruction and services, tutoring, career counseling, and other supports as necessary. And whereas cyber education programs operated by school districts provide students with a smooth transition to and from the traditional school setting and give students opportunities to participate in district instructional courses and resources, and students may choose to participate in extracurricular activities such as athletics, band, music, clubs, and social activities such as homecoming and prom. And students may graduate in district ceremonies and receive a district diploma. And whereas the Commonwealth is the sole authorizer of cyber charter schools, yet the tuition costs for students attending these schools are borne by school districts and local taxpayers. And whereas the majority of the cyber schools have consistently placed in the bottom 5% for educational performance in the state, further, graduation rates of cyber charters are consistently and substantially below state average. And whereas the current funding formula for cyber charter schools is based on school district expenditures, with no relationship to the actual instructional cost for regular and special education instruction and services of the students attending the charter school. And funding of cyber charter schools costs school districts and taxpayers more than $463 million in the 2016-2017 school year. Whereas school districts that operate high-performing cyber programs can do so at significantly reduced cost as compared to paying tuition to a cyber charter school, enabling them to retain critical funding in the district for the benefit of all students. And whereas Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 support school districts that provide their own cyber school education programs by removing the financial responsibility for resident students who enroll in cyber charter schools instead of the district programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board supports Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 or other efforts to provide a fiscally common sense approach that will provide savings for school districts operating full-time online learning programs and are required to make tuition payments for their students to attend cyber charter schools. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the elected senators and representatives of the Upper Darby School District in the General Assembly and to the Governor of Pennsylvania. Adopted this day, what is this, March? Not yet. Okay.
So we have a motion for the resolution. I need a second. Okay, Mr. Fields, are there any comments from board members on this resolution?
Just real quick comment. I was a big fan of this bill and it is definitely something that's going to help all the school districts in the state and everybody has an interest in this bill getting passed.
I still have a comment. I'm also a big fan of this Senate Bill 34 and I just want people to know that as school board member Fields talked about, the fact that all the representatives and senators are not in favor of it and are not supporting it right now, so it's really important that we get this passed through.
Any comments from the public on the resolution? Seeing none? Whole vote?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Rucci?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries. Now you can read that last question.
Thank you. Adopted this, what is today? The 12th, thank you. The 12th is higher. The 12th day of March 2019. Thank you. Is there any other new business from board members? Okay. We're at the time of our public hearing. We'll call upon Upper Darby School District residents who have signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in.
Meredith Hay, 123 East Berkeley Avenue in Clifton Heights, and I just, I think my concerns have already been addressed, but I just wanted to thank all of you for this vote. I'm, as a parent of young kids in Clifton Heights, I'm really excited about the prospect of a middle school that my kids can walk to, so thank you.
I'm just going to finish my thought that I didn't finish earlier, that I just think if the school district could put out a little more information to counteract this myth that we are being daily invaded from Philadelphia, the evidence that I keep hearing is, I see them riding the trolley. So there are many reasons to ride a trolley, doesn't mean you're coming from Philadelphia. So if there's something the district could maybe put out to the public just to maybe explain where people live that might require them to ride the trolley to the high school and also, you know, I think in the frequently asked questions, it talked about how many students are asked to leave the district, you know, so far this year and last year, but if there's a way to sort of politicize that a little bit more just to kind of counteract this myth that is out there. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public hearing. A motion is in order for adjournment. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.